Are you ready? Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this time of year where we can celebrate the birth of Jesus, and we pray that you might be with the city council and the mayor tonight and other city leaders as decisions are made. We pray that they'll both be pleasing to you and beneficial to our community. Thank you again for loving us first, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pray to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. For those, we're starting a few minutes late. The city's been switching over to a new email, so please bear with us for a little bit. And so hopefully everyone got their packets and had time to take a look at it. So we need approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, committee reports. Chamber is not here tonight. Finance.
All right, a couple of things. We got our numbers in for the month of November. All the numbers were pretty well flat except the use tax, which was thirteen thousand five seventy-two dollars higher. Overall, year-to-date, we're up two hundred and three thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. The use tax. People are buying online. So keep in mind, if you stop locally, if you can find, find it local, you can still buy it online.
Yep.
Get a little help off the online sales. We had a finance meeting last night. Couple of things that were brought up. Actually, one thing. Street department will take care of the other.
Okay.
We had a request from the airport to replace the tractor. They had three bids. The lowest one was thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. The other, the higher one, was sixty-one. Their recommendation was to go with the lesser, the smallest bid. It's the finance recommendation that we approved the lowest bid. And that, I can put that in form of motion. The airport will pay for half, and the city will pay nineteen thousand five hundred dollars out of the capital improvement money.
All right, so we have that as a motion.
Motion.
We got a second? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I have.
That's all you got? Okay.
Oh, we need a closed session for real estate.
All right. Then fire.
Mayor, council members, some news worthy events that's kind of going on lately. Last evening, we did have a residential house fire, which we responded. Crews came in, noticed heavy smoke conditions in an apartment complex. And we had forced entry to one of the residents, in which we were safely able to remove two children and a mother from heavy smoke conditions. Due to a stove fire that was kind of getting out of control, and they were all checked and taken care of by fire medics on scene, pre-gun released, and minor smoke damage to a couple of other apartment complexes. So again, thoughts and prayers for folks that are going through events like this. Other things kind of going on in the past couple of weeks. We did have our awards banquet, in which we do our annual firefighter of the year, and this year's award went to Mr. Mark Dennis, who's right in the camera tonight. But again, it was well deserved on his behalf for all of his efforts he put in for our fire service at this time. The new fire trucks are in. Kind of maybe been through Facebook and so forth. We started a new tradition in which we do a blessing of the fire trucks. It was a big hit last night for all members, those in attendance. And again, thank you all for all the efforts that you've done as far as the council in order to make this happen, and it's going to help the citizens out tremendously. So again, thank you. Construction bids have been received on Fire Station Number Two. And we're currently waiting on additional grant approval before any announcements are made on that. So we're thankful for the way things are kind of going there. You will be getting year-end totals beginning in January from both code enforcement and fire. Giving you a heads up as far as what's been going on this past year. We're also going to include a listing of properties that have been written up and the disposition. So we'll give you a yearly total there. And I'm hoping maybe we can start incorporating. We tried it once before, but doing that on a monthly basis. So you all, as council members, will know per ward, your reward, what's going on with some of these properties that were. Regarding construction, Fire Committee did meet a week or so ago and agreed to pay Dylan Pollard, our architect. We had an outstanding balance with those folks, total of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And it was agreed upon then to go ahead and pay them out of the building reserve and get them all caught up for their services that have been rendered. So I think we need that in the form of a council approval.
Our committee has a recommendation.
We have a motion? In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I did have one more thing I was going to kind of bring up tonight. Talking to a local architect, as well as Vincy, me and Vincy Dell, a local grant writer, been discussing. I throw this out here for some discussion in the near future or future. Possibly the doing FEMA safe houses, maybe one per ward. This would probably involve having city property in each ward. And there's a strong possibility of getting some FEMA grants to do this. Again, it may be a good thing to look at. I know with the recent outbreak of storms and the severity that we've been facing with them, that it may be something that we want to consider doing. These buildings could also be served as multi-purposes, rooted for the city and the citizens in the town where there's not a disaster going on. But again, I bring that out in open session just to kind of be thinking of some thought processes about where might be a good place and to check on the feasibility of doing this in the future.
Paul, get a chance, Europe, take away, go by Jackson City and look at one they built. It's a multi-purpose, they do like basketball, different stuff like that. But it's kind of a community center.
Yes.
But it also is FEMA rated. Look at that, see what you think.
We definitely will. But again, I look forward to your input.
Chief Mouser.
Yeah.
Could it be located on park property as well?
Sure.
I'm getting ready to put one in or at school.
Right, right. That was the architect that I spoke with. He said, "We're doing one here locally." And then again, it was just brought up about possibly doing one per ward. Grant writer. Vincy Dell, she was telling me, said, "Paul, that could be done. We could do it per ward." So that would be a probably a pretty good thing to look at.
Okay, great.
I don't have anything for you.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, you do. He also did one other thing there last night at Firehouse. And luckily, I didn't get any phone calls this morning to go into the office, pushing in the truck.
Oh, yeah. We've done pushing in the truck. That's another tradition that's done across, in firehouses across the US. And again, we were able to push in an eighty-thousand-pound truck into a bay. But we've done that successfully without the mermen being involved.
Yeah, mermen, and I didn't get any phone calls this morning. It's like, hey, can you run by the office?
No ordinance coming.
Yeah. All right. Human resources.
We'd like to have a meeting, but we're going to need to set that up with it being this time of year. So we'll be contacting the committee about that. We want to start looking at management salaries and that type of stuff, too, after we've gone through the previous raise and to lift management out of that. And we want to try to level all that out a little bit. So we'll be working on that amongst a few other things.
The police met, early, the police committee met. There was an issue within the employee book. And just wanted to see if that was something we could tackle tonight. Came out about thirty minutes ago. Yeah, Kenny and Mr. Verden were talking more about this, so I'll let you two talk about the.
What it is, it deals with verbal warnings, written warnings and all that. And then the first thing, I highlighted the two areas we're talking about here. It says a verbal warning. It says at the supervisor's discretion, documentation of a verbal warning may be kept for fifteen months. And then the second paragraph, it goes on about a written warning, and it says to keep that for fifteen months. At the time this was all put in there, there were two council members who wanted that in there. They're no longer here. But our legal counsel has said that that really needs to come out. That the warnings need to stay in there forever.
Okay, so no limitations on it?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
So to take that out of the employee handbook, we would need a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion in a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I need a roll call? I don't know. Terry's not sitting here beside me.
I was thinking you'd do for that, but I've been doing.
All right. We'll do a roll call.
Yes.
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 To be safe.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Good. Covered it both directions. It's only thing, y'all, Terry's not here tonight, so it's like, roll call. All right. I think that's going to be all for human resources then.
Yeah.
Then humane, this team's not here.
As usual, not going to show the dogs. They stand up to the point of transporting as they can and continue to work. So we got some very nice donations came in, which we appreciate.
I have a question. Are we at the point where we need to start looking at bigger and better with that department? And I mean, the donations that come into that department are incredible. And you start seeing these other cities that have the ability to have dogs adopted and things like that. I don't think we're really, we do a lot of ours of sending them out rather than adoption. Should we start looking at something like that and get the volunteer group to get together on it? I'm not sure.
Yeah, we can pursue that further. We do adopt a lot of dogs. That's first choice. Unfortunately, it seems like the larger dogs don't get adopted. They're the ones that we have to try to transport out, and they're the ones that's hardest to transport out.
We're at max capacity a lot, right?
Last seven months, we didn't just board it.
Yeah, so people are pretty fanatical about taking care of the animals, which I appreciate. And maybe we could sort of look in the long term with that. I don't know. It's hard for me to say that because I don't know, I'm not on that committee. But it just, from my observation, discussion with some of the other councilmen and all that stuff, seems like something that we might eventually have to get to.
Well, the building she's in now is actually, was an office building that was ordered to put up. And it's piecemealed out back. You know, I would say if we're going to look at that, we should plan for it and visit other. Maybe we can get with the Department of Ag, the team could, to get recommendations of pounds that they see that are top-notch, where we could look at them and not just go by the seat of her pants thinking we get to build it something. And it really is not conducive to what she needs out there.
Yeah, making sure one that is built to spec and long-term use.
Consider if we want to.
Makes it easier for her inspections and all that.
We had to quit taking cats because of that issue, too. And then we might want to consider if we include that. Lots of things to consider with it. And we're kind of the area that gets dumped on with animals, so.
Yeah, I've had several reports where people said, "Well, you know, it's, there was this husky that was all around the town, not here." We won't mention the town. And then, you know, two weeks later, the dog is, you know, two doors down from the state bank is where they saw it at. So they called in, it's like, "I don't know how it got from this town to down here by the bank. It's headed to the park, but that's where it's at. But it's been the last month down in this other town." So people pick up and drop off here for some reason, I guess because we've got our pound. And so it ends up being a dumping ground for other animals.
And we don't have to buy property. There's enough property right there this west of it.
We consider getting accounting involved in it, too.
I just wanted to say that I think, like Councilman Lot said, that it definitely needs to be checked into with the state about regulations. Because the street department, we did quite a bit of work at the one that's out there several times. They came back and the state said, "No." It had to be redone or could not be done that way. So definitely need to find out before we start doing stuff that's going to have to be changed.
So we'll put that on, too, with the committee. Y'all can start looking into rules, regulations, and how to expand and make the process, you know, bigger and better out there so we can be able to love them or get them.
Get a campaign started.
Okay, that'll be good. Thank you. All right. Police.
Hi, Mayor, Council. First thing I want to address is this past week, we had our shop with a coffee bill on the seventeenth of December. We're able to help fifty-one kids this year. Last year, we helped, I think it was like forty-four. So we're able to help more families this year through our fundraising effort. I can't thank the citizens for their support enough for us to be able to help this many families who's been hit. And also, they start bringing out individuals. Now Walmart was huge in their help with us this year. I can't thank them enough. They just did a phenomenal job. They're taking care of us with the kids and the toys and all that. Bottom line, I want to mention them. Also, this past weekend, we did have our year-end Christmas party. Three officers, so three people were selected as officers of the year for day shift. Officer Victoria Rangestill, the day shift officer of the year. Officer Scott Ellison, was our night shift officer of the year. And also, communications officer of the year, Courtney Teff. Those three were selected this year for officer of the year. Everything else I have is for closed session unless you guys have any questions. Thank you.
All right, street.
We've got a couple of things, but it's not going to take a lot of time. Tying into the finance committee, we needed to get the people that did the construction work on the Peanut Road. I don't think we have a proper name for it yet, do we?
No, we just call it Delta Peanut Road or Peanut Road or.
Yeah, so we might consider doing that at some point, especially since we own the machine that prints it out. Anyway, we want to make sure we got them paid. So we have agreed to take money out of the transportation taxes alone to the payment of the. Yeah, the contractor that performed the work on the Peanut Road. And we want to make sure we keep him paid because he's got to finish it. And so, and we're doing a lot of movement on it. So we want to make sure that gets taken care of. So we've approved that and.
When the money comes in, it will go back into the.
It's just a matter of getting the grant back, the money back from the grants, right?
Right.
So we'll get that back. I want everybody to be aware of that, that it's coming back in. And because we still have our goal of trying to get everything paid by this time next year, hopefully. And we'll need that money for that, certainly.
I wrote Leslie a P.O. and sent it to her. So she should be ready to send that to them. We'd have taken care of.
Great. Also, we're looking at a little bit of problem with people driving on Peanut Road. And we are not, we don't feel like that that's safe because we're running as many as a hundred eighteen-wheelers, or will be at some point, a hundred eighteen-wheelers a day up and down that street. So we're going to look at marking that street of eighteen-wheeler trucks only, whatever it takes.
Truck route.
Yeah, truck route. Whatever we need to make it plain that people should not be driving on that road as for the eighteen-wheelers only. So that'll be coming up as well. Otherwise, go ahead and fire away there, keep.
We don't have a whole lot, like Bill said. Knuckle Brothers has finished their construction on all the intersections. There's a few barricades still left on Second and Athene. They'll pick up sometime this week after it's set for seven days. Our nine sixteen-wheel loader is down for going on the second week. I'm not sure what's wrong with it. We've got the second mechanic coming tomorrow to look at it in the morning, see if he can figure it out. The engine's completely locked up. It hadn't been that long ago that we had it rebuilt. But the guy that has been looking at it said the bottom end looks good and the top end looks good. He's taken starter off and checked it and several other things, but he still can't figure out why it won't turn over. So we've got another diesel mechanic coming in the morning to look at it and see if we can't get something figured out with that. Other than that, the only other thing we got is the sixteenth of December was Kim Cuss's last day. He retired after thirty-five years and seven months at the street department. And he's graduated to senior citizenship now. So he's putting in a lot of time out there. He was the sweeper driver. Y'all probably saw him driving that a lot, so. But he's gone. Other than that, that's all we got for the street department.
Talk to me about that afterwards, too. All right. You want to go into stormwater?
Storm.
Okay. Go ahead.
I don't have a whole lot for that either. We've got the excavator did all he could do on Buffalo Ditch without getting in it. And with the rain, it's going to be a little waffle when it get in it. If it keeps freezing, we'll probably be able to get in it a little bit better. But right now, he's working on Snipes Lou. Started at the bypass, going to see what he can get on that from the bank side. We have got signed post orders that should be here hopefully tomorrow so we can start marking our outfalls. That's part of our stormwater plan. I think me and Victor decided to do ten or fifteen a year. And so we've got about ten marks that we're going to put up. We've got all the signs made, so we're going to be working on getting that done, part of the stormwater plan. I talked to Councilman Milott the other day. I think he went by and looked at Jackson and Tatum, the last rain we had and the couple before. I've gone by and since we've got the two new fifteen-inch pipes in, so far we've had no flooding there. Where in the past, we had a little flooding, but it went away pretty quick. But I didn't see any the last few rains. So we've gone, we went from a twelve-inch pipe to two fifteen-inch. So hopefully, that'll take care of the better part of that. Like I said, if we get enough rain in a short amount of time, there will be more places than that flood. But hopefully, we've just about taken care of that over there.
There was splash of water and water into the street.
Yeah, yeah. When I went by, there was flooding in other places that there wasn't there, so yeah.
I purposely went there to see.
Yeah, so hopefully, we've got that taken care of. And that's all I've got, unless y'all have any questions.
Looks good up there on Frisco where they got them big scrub trees growing and all that. They cut it down. It looks good if they keep it mowed, dicked.
Yeah. I'm not really sure why they weren't cutting there, but.
Looks good.
He said there wasn't anything in there, so we've got to cut down now. With the other mower we got to go on the back of the truck, we'll be able to take care of a lot more stuff like that where we don't really want to drive a tractor through. So we'll be able to get a lot of other places we haven't been able to in the past. Corner visibility, some social space and stuff. Thank y'all.
Okay. Industrial? I can put the DNR part here. I had a conversation with a Jacob router from Department of Natural Resources today. And there's a program out there called the Brownfield Program. And this is going to be going for all departments. If you have a piece of property, an old building, and yes, I talked to him about the hospital, that needs to be cleaned up. The way I took it is there is some funding out there for the EPA environmental studies and also some possible money for helping with demolition of different properties that we have in town that could be of city use. And they said there's, you know, three to five times more money in there right now than there's ever been. So they're reaching out to smaller communities. He's like, whether you're a fire department, talked to him a little bit about, you know, possible helping with the demolition of the firehouse out there. He said that could be part of it. The city does not have to own the property, just have a possible use for it. So I brought up the hospital, and he goes, "We can look at that as well. That would be something that they could possibly help with." So there's a lot of unanswered questions, but there's also, you know, a little bit of a rainbow there going, trying to look at what information that they have for. So we'll have another meeting here with him and probably trying to get with department heads and the committee heads to set up, to sit down and probably do a phone conversation with him to say, "Hey, you know, these are some properties we're looking at, or, you know, what else can we add into there?" So he said there's several different phases. You know, the first phase, the cost of environmental study and all that, there's no cost to the city. So we can pick, you know, different properties to have them do. There's a small phase two where you have to pay a coordinator for it. He said most of that is under two thousand dollars for that core for the next phase. So there's a whole bunch of different things, a lot of unanswered questions. But also, you know, there's a door that's being opened for the city to possibly look at from an industrial standpoint, what do we want to look for? And with the, you bringing up the FEMA housing and things like our safe housing area, you know, that would probably fit right in. So it's more, so we'll be looking to get together, you know, with all departments and everything and have a longer conversation with Department of Natural Resources. And also, every time I talk with DNR, I always bring up, "Is there any way we can get Buffalo Ditch not licensed as a recreational waterway?" And he did see, sent me in a email today, after I was finally able to get it open again, that he sent off to somebody else. He goes, "I'm not the right person for that, but I know who I can send it to." So, hey, we've started a conversation again on how to get Buffalo Ditch taken off the recreational waterway. Because I told him, the only time that the place has got water in it is when it rains. So, all right, so that would be an industrial.
Baseball game.
Yeah. All right. Senior citizen?
I talked to Laura Ford the other day. They haven't had, been able to have a meeting with different conflicts that come up. We have a schedule, and there were some other things that conflicted with it. But she said they do have the dishwasher ordered, but it's like everything else, slow getting here. They got the freezer unit in, and they should be getting the fence in shortly and the security cameras. So all that's looking good as far as, she said everything else is pretty good this time.
All right. One other issue to go back to on human resources. And just to go up to the council. The CLGW, some of the employees have asked about, you know, the holiday area. Friday is going to be Christmas Eve. Then next Friday is New Year's Eve. CLGW has it up where they're taking off Friday and Monday. And, but then they're taking off Friday, but not following Monday for New Year's. My office, I'll be open, not Friday, but I'll be open Monday. But, you know, what does the council want to stay with just Friday? Do we want to offer Friday and Monday to our employees?
Friday be a good start.
So Friday is already on the books, but it's, yeah, it's Christmas Eve.
It's already the day.
And one of the thoughts was, they've done a good job of maintaining department revenue and budgets and all that stuff. So that might be a reward for that. Is that something we've done in the past, or is that we?
I think it changes all the time depending on when the, I don't know if there's anything in the handbook to say when. I know my office, I'll be open on Monday, but, you know, other offices will take off Friday and Monday for the holiday.
I'd say with the holiday, you know, Saturday, if they probably beat Monday, so.
Federal holidays, if it's on Saturday, it's confirmed on Friday.
Which is what we're already doing.
Right, right. Already doing that.
We're doing that for sure. The question is, are we going to do it Monday, too?
On the third? No.
No.
Not the third. Not the third.
No, I'm not Monday the third, Monday the twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
Guess for Christmas.
Yeah, Christmas time.
They get hungover.
Not for, but not for New Year's.
Yeah. So it's, uh, so that was prior for discussion to, uh,
I've seen it where Mayor's in the past have made a decision on day off for employees.
Prove it.
But it's, doesn't bother me one way or the other, but I wanted to bring it up for a, you know, council decision.
Department heads, think on it.
Imagine me, I know in the, in the past, we didn't get Christmas Eve off, we got Christmas off, and it was kinda up to the mayor whether we got Christmas Eve off, and in the past, he kinda. But since Christmas is on Saturday, and we already are gonna get Friday off, then it'd kinda be that extra day that we were getting for Christmas Eve Monday. I don't care one way or another, but y'all, y'all's.
We're firefighters, we're twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, so.
Kinda like you got.
Same thing with us, I mean, we're gonna be working regardless, so.
The biggest concern is, it's election time, and, uh, we didn't post it nor anything that the City Hall would be closed, in case somebody wanted to come in on Monday, the sign of the elections.
Tuesday, the last day shoe file, and I'm just a little bit worried about not being here Monday.
I don't see that way.
For late people.
Ben was just, so, have to stay open on Monday? Stay open on Monday.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, all right. That'll work. All right, uh, we don't have any unfinished business, so.
I've got, I need to say something about hospitals there.
Okay.
Put it in the section.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
I, I have, uh, observed that there is a lot of traffic out at the hospital right now. Um, they are, so we had one of our patients that was very inquisitive, went out and talked to the traffic, and they are, uh, taking, uh, they're scrapping stuff out of the hospital still, I did not see EKG machines, things, I'm amazed they're still in there. Um, but they are still scrapping it, and they're making, I don't know, apparently about six thousand dollars a day out of it, is what they're doing. Um, at least that's what they reported. Um, I have not been able to get ahold of the new owners, I have had zero.
Probably have new owners, have they officially transferred?
Group out of Louisiana.
I know, but is it?
I don't, I have not been told it's official yet.
Okay, well, I've tried, so.
It's not official yet.
It's not officially?
No, it's.
Good, all right, well, that might be why they're not calling me back.
Yeah.
But they, after I finally convinced them that I was not a salesman, uh, they took me more seriously. But, uh, that's the big thing, is the hospital deconstruction going on, is what I call it. And then, uh, we've got the Hospital Committee, and now we have our ability to give out emails, so I'd like, I'd like to, uh, have my email given out to people that would, uh, like to see about being on that committee. And it is, uh, ward five, underscore, uh, one at cityofkennetmo.com, and, uh, can we get her?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, anybody that is interested in being on the Hospital Committee, please let me know, and we'll start working on getting that together. All right, that's it.
Okay. All righty, um, new business, uh, approval of the bank balances.
I'll make a motion in a second.
All right, there's a motion in a second, all in favor? All right, approval of the city abstract.
Motion.
Sure.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, statement of revenue and expenditures.
Motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Mayor's report, as we mentioned earlier, uh, if you would like to set up and run for one of our wards, the last day to do that is December twenty-eighth, next Tuesday. Um, that, uh.
At five o'clock.
At five o'clock, so, um, if you're, would like to do something good for your city and run for a position, you know, now's the time to sign up for it. Uh, it's not that hard, come up here to talk with Miss Brenda, she doesn't back, and, uh, and, uh, fill out just a little bit of paperwork, and you have it notarized, and there you go. Um, then, uh, so that is just right around the corner. Uh, there's a new list of the emails that will, uh, come out, uh, under Gmail, once we get a few more bugs, we'll all get, uh, able to, uh, on going, those will be listed on the, uh, website as soon as we can get that updated. But, uh, as anyone that saw earlier, uh, everyone's trying to get those up and going, so it takes a little bit, they're growing pains. Uh, and, uh, but, you know what? This weekend is Christmas, and presents are nice, Christmas trees are great, the lights outside and everything else, but, you know, I was at a daycare earlier today, and even the little kids there at that daycare had the right idea. They knew Jesus was the reason for the season, so keep that in mind this weekend, um, and, uh, enjoy your time with your family, uh, your family doesn't have to be blood, it is the family that you make. And, uh, the ones that you have around, that you want to be around, that's your family. Um, and, so enjoy the time with them, eat well, remember there's no calories on Friday and Saturday, uh, that can all start coming out on, uh, Monday. And, uh, um, and just enjoy that time of, uh, uh, family get-togethers, uh, whether it's at church, at home, or anything else. Uh, and so, uh, with that, uh, I know we've got a few things to go in closed session, so, uh, we'll ask for our public comment, they go into closed session shortly after that.
Following up to what you said, you know, everybody knows that the Kennet schools are out for two weeks, which means you have a lot of kids running around. So the week after Christmas, after Santa's brought all their bikes and scooters and hoverboards and balls and stuff, they're gonna be out running around. So we just use a little extra caution when we're driving.
Yeah.
That'd be great, because they're not gonna be looking, they're gonna be out. Just keep that in mind, just, you're gonna have a lot of kids running around.
So. All right, public comment. Three, two, one, all right, motion to close and go into closed session?
Motion.
Say?
Yes.
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 All right, go into closed session.